... and keep going on. So, Gary tonight, would you be the alternate?
Sure.
And then every time anyone asks, we're just gonna keep score and go through in order, so there's no confusion. First order of business, it's a public hearing, Edson Bigford, application thirteen dash oh seven, Edson Bigford Realty owner, requesting a subdivision of the property located at four thirty-seven Hot Meadow Street, F thirteen, block one oh three, lot zero zero five dash three, to create two lots, zone I two.
Good evening, I'm Gus Kaczynski from Edson Bigford Realty. I'm also a resident of Sinsbury forty-three Wood Haven Drive. We're here to talk about a parcel on the corner of, here's Route ten and Powder Forest Drive. There's about forty-two acres here, and you'll see, this is, you know, Route ten, we have the buffers on here where it's a hundred fifty foot buffer up against Route ten. There's fifty on the back and thirty-five on the front. You'll remember this site, maybe if you've driven down Powder Forest Drive, it's a big, flat, open site where that's where they were chipping all the wood from the storm a couple of years ago. This site right here is about seven or eight acres. It will actually be out there in the springtime. We received, in the early fall, a site plan application to do, for an earth excavation, so we're gonna be clearing about seven acres and taking out about ninety thousand yards of material. There's a big hill right here. We want to flatten it for future development. So, that's kind of the site. Also, a lot of this up here is all wetlands, so there's a big piece of this that's wetlands. So, why are we here tonight? Technically, right now, this is two parcels of land. It's four thirty-seven Hot Meadow Street, there's a lot line here, and then this is lot five dash four in the Powder Forest. We took a look at, with an attorney, this parcel, four thirty-seven, was part of a bigger parcel that's been cut up a couple of times. Dino got some of the land when we did that. We sold some of this land. So, the parcel got cut up over time, and we looked and said, you know, is this a legal parcel? He was like, you know, you have a line here, it might be, your best bet is to go in and get subdivision approval, make it clear that, so there's no issue on title. Okay? That's one issue. We also have this site under contract, which I'll get to in a second, but one of the issues when we were talking to Hiram about that is typically, when we come in for a site plan approval, we submit the subdivision application with it. Technically, the site plan application has to be approved, and the appeal period has to end before they can act on the site plan approval. So, we decided to go ahead with the subdivision application, declare up the title, and get that issue out of the way at this point. So, it's really, we're just, we're showing all the land, the two parcels, and we'd like to subdivide it. Basically, kind of in the middle of the site where this is just under twenty-seven acres, and this is about twenty-six acres. The reason we picked this site is there's intermittent water course right down the middle. When you get heavy rains, it runs through here. This happens to be a low spot, so there's a wetland in here. So, we figured, the normal spot that you want to subdivide land is put it through the middle of the wetlands because you can take up the wetlands in your setback area, your side setback area. So, that's really why we picked that line there. Okay? We will tell you though, this site is under contract with an assisted living facility. Technically, they can come in, this is I two zoning, they can come in under a special exception and apply for a site plan approval with, under a special exception. We did meet though, I'm trying to think, it was early December, we met with the zoning commission informally. We are considering on these two sites and the adjacent site, a PAD application where we bundle them all together, go in for planned area development. We can show you some of the stuff. This is a very preliminary plan where an assisted living facility typically, you know, if you've seen them out there, they're three, sometimes four stories tall. I mean, this is, could be a hundred eighty-something units. It's about two hundred thousand square feet, so it's a big commercial building, but it fits in with the neighborhood with large commercial buildings. The only thing is, typically on an assisted living facility, they're not big glass and steel buildings. They typically have a little more residential architecture to them. You know, they'll have a, typically, they have more residential scale windows, they'll have siding, they'll have a pitched roof. This was really an early concept plan, they're going through and revising it, so it's probably not gonna look like this, but you've seen a variety of assisted living facilities around, and they all kind of look the same. They have a residential style architecture, but they are big residential buildings. Let's see. And on site three, on the corner of Powder Forest Drive, we've actually studied this. We showed Hiram, there's five different plans that we have. We can put somewhere between seventy-five and ninety thousand square feet of commercial space on here. We are preserving, you'll notice, the big hundred fifty foot setback. When you drive by Powder Forest Drive, you see the brownstone wall, the crabapple trees, and the big grass open field. All that's gonna stay. We have a series of buildings. We look, we studied some different things where we put a bigger building up front. We also studied putting a bigger building in the back. The one we, we looked at putting buildings over here, the one we kind of came to, which we think is the more probable of them, is a series of smaller, single-story buildings. This, because of the grading back here, could be a two-story building, and we see these buildings, you drive down the middle, and then, you know, they'll have a series of windows in the front. They could be a little more storefront, or they could be, stop the glass three or four feet off, where it fits a little more of a, like a doctor's office, a dental office, more office-type space, but it could be commercial space. We, you know, we could do some sort of commercial stuff in there. It's more a function of the market. And that's kind of the concept that we're thinking of, a commercial space. It's about seventy-five thousand square feet on what's really a bigger site, but it's about eight acres of usable, developable land. However, these two plans are not really part of the application tonight. It's just, it's something we're working on. We'll be back to the zoning commission once we get a little further along in our planning, but that's, that's really why we're here. This is a prelude to that, so we can get the subdivision done, to get our site plan out before we do our site plan, and to clear up the title. So, that's really why we're here.
Could you go back to the first drawing, please?
Yep.
Before you do that, one quick question.
Yep.
In the northeast corner of the green, if you put your finger, is that where the tip on the road is?
It's actually right here is the low spot on the road, yeah, because the sewer runs under here.
Sorry, that's all right.
Nope, that's right.
That's okay. Is there an existing property line dividing these two parcels?
Technically, there is a property line right here, because this divides, this is four thirty-seven Hot Meadow Street, this is site five four in the Powder Forest. We are presently, we are getting two tax bills from the town. However, this site has been cut up because we cut off Candlewood Court from it. There was some land taken out when we sold some land, well, when we split with Dino, we had to adjust some of the lot lines to meet their quantity distance. So, the attorney looked at it and said, you know, you've done some things to this land, you know, it's not really clear, it's, when you go search the title, it's not really clear what happened, and that this is a truly a subdivided lot. He said it would be a lot cleaner if you went and got subdivision approval. You know, moving the things here, we have the front edge, we have the coverage, we have all the things that meet, you know, a typical lot.
So, your application, I think, says re-subdivision.
Okay.
Right? No, I'm sorry. Your application says subdivision.
Subdivision.
But the town engineer's notes consider it a re-subdivision.
Yeah, and essentially, Bill, because we're having a public hearing this evening, that's really a moot point, because the only difference between the two would be the requirement that we have a public hearing. So, to clear up all those issues that Gus talked about before, and the potential for there being any problem at all, we call it a re-subdivision, and we suggested that we have a hearing. So, that takes care of any potential problem. And the only difference between a subdivision and a re-subdivision, obviously, is just procedurally.
Is it typical to have a re-subdivision, just move the property line?
Not typical, but this isn't really a typical situation either, where, you know, what we often have is a piece of property that somebody's owned for many years, maybe a family or something, and then they have, maybe they cut off a piece years ago for one child or something, and then they come back in a couple of years later, and then they have another or something. That's a re-subdivision as well. But what we did was we talked with Rich Switzki, and Howard and I talked with your applicant, and we decided the best way to deal with this is to call it a re-subdivision. That's the most extreme thing you could call it, and do it this way here. So, at this point in time, what's really happening is we're simply dividing an existing piece of property into two, if the commission approves, approved lots. That's it, in the simplest fashion.
Basically, in two pieces now, you're just re-drawing lines.
So, yeah. So, somebody could've said, well, why don't you just move the line and file it out? Well, you know, inevitably, what happens is, somebody, whether it's a neighbor or whatever, says, what are you trying to do? You didn't tell us what's going on, there was no notice, but what? So, we want to make sure that everything's clear. These projects are too significant to have a problem like that come up at the eleventh hour. So, we want to make sure that everything is clear going forward, so that's why we decided to do it this way.
Any other commission questions or comments?
How many square thousand?
How many square thousand feet would the residential assisted living facility?
This, it could be about two hundred thousand square feet.
Yeah, I have a couple more.
Okay.
A re-subdivision is treated just like a subdivision, so you have to abide by the subdivision regulations. Where is the twenty percent open space?
When we originally got the master plan approval for the Powder Forest in eighty-three or eighty-four, what we did as part of the master plan is, we set aside twenty percent open space. We're actually having our surveyor calculate that right now. When we did it, it was like oh eight or oh nine, we were around twenty-four percent, and then we sold some land on Grist Mill Road, so we've got the final plans on that, and we'll get that to Hiram.
That's another parcel, or is it part of this parcel?
No, it's not part of this parcel, but when we went in and got the whole Powder Forest master plan approved, okay? What they did at the time was, they said, okay, you have to give us twenty percent open space on the entire parcel, and we're not looking at twenty percent here, twenty percent here. So, we have calculations that go back to the original Powder Forest master plan, and it says, okay, on this site, there's, on each site, here's what, here's what the open space is.
So, in essence, what you're saying, since you've already given us twenty percent, you don't want anything at this point?
Right, right.
On these two pieces?
Correct.
Along those lines too, Bill, I think there is a, I believe, what's proposed to be a conservation easement across the front of that property anyway, which is referred to before as keeping that front lawn. So, that's certainly be helpful as well, in terms of minimizing the impact.
And you can't do much. You can really bump that up or right. Up in here, correct. I mean, this, the majority of this is wetlands. We haven't mapped, like, we mapped this line, but we didn't really map everything in here. There is some upland soil, but we didn't map it because you can't really get to it, so we didn't bother with it.
If this are a single parcel, and you were coming in for a subdivision, independent of any of the decisions that had been made before, we would ask for some type of open space.
Yep, absolutely.
Whether it be an easement, conservation easement, or something else. So, Hiram, are you comfortable with the agreement that was made previously?
Yeah, I am, and I talked to Howard about that as well, and he's also run this by the Wetlands Agency, Wetlands Commission as well, and they're comfortable with it. He's provided a letter for the file that indicates that, at this point in time, Wetlands Agency has given this letter as what they called their final report. So, they're comfortable with it at this point, Bill. Just to note too, that when the applicant comes back to the PAD, this commission's gonna see that again as a referral. So, you will see it again when the actual site development plan comes in and take a look at what actually gets proposed as opposed to a schematic that we're looking at right here, I'm sorry.
So, this is the same thing you showed, conservation, correct?
Well, technically, no, what we showed conservation, we went through conservation earlier this summer, but that was for, for the earth excavation.
That's right.
Correct, yeah. And so, we, you know, we went, showed what we're doing, the erosion control plan, here's with the wetlands. We went through all that, and they were comfortable with what we were doing.
So, we have lot five dash four.
Yep.
And, I guess.
Five dash three.
Five dash three. And formerly, or currently, five dash four has twelve acres.
Correct.
Right?
The existing property line is right here. I think this is, it's about forty-two acres, so I think four thirty-seven Hot Meadow was the smaller piece.
If you look on the note, right in the middle of five four.
Yep.
Okay, so it's formally twelve acres.
Yep.
In parentheses, right?
Yep.
And then revised area fourteen point nine five.
Correct.
What's that, what was the revision that changed that acreage?
Well, actually, it's formerly twenty-six nine nine, now it's a revised area, it's just under fifteen acres.
So, the revised. The other one is increasing, formerly fourteen eighty-eight going up to twenty-six.
Have you resubmitted the lines?
I have a different one here.
Oh. Oh, I think I know what happened. We probably, those are the smaller ones that just got sent out a couple of days ago.
Yes.
We must've sent out an earlier version. Yeah, this was.
So, it's your.
Basically, your twelve acres.
The way you're doing it now, you're just, you're increasing the size of one way versus the others.
Correct.
Twenty-six is what they're. The parcel, five four, and five three is increasing to fourteen to twenty-six.
The reason it caught my eye was the total didn't add up.
Okay.
Apologies for that. I was on another one where there were different maps on there.
Okay.
So, which one is the correct one?
This one is the larger one.
The larger map is the correct one, yeah.
We can state which map is in the date on it?
Yep, it's one of four, and it's dated eleven, twenty-five thirteen.
So, why is it different on the smaller map? It's not, it's pretty good on older versions.
The same thing, yeah.
The debits and credits work though. What you take from one, you add to the other.
Yeah, it's all the same area, we just moved the line. So, this is about fifteen acres, where it used to be twenty-seven. It's the same date.
So, we have, we have an issue with the drawing dates.
Yeah, the drawing dates.
Which is the same date?
Same date?
Exactly.
So, which one's got the stamp on it?
They just use this block, and they produce them. These are the ones that got the stamp on it though. These are the ones during the office statement, right?
Yeah.
So, they have the professional engineer stamp on it.
Yeah.
Let me just be clear then. It says, if I've got the right ones here, and so we do, revised site five dash three, formerly fourteen point eight eight acres, revised area twenty-six point nine two.
Yep.
Site five point four, formerly twenty-six point nine nine acres, revised area fourteen point nine five. Those are the most current ones we have. Those are the two lots.
Yeah, the only, the only issue is that they're both dated the same date.
Well, yeah, and I'll speak to, the applicant should speak to the surveyor, because anytime they make a change on a map like that, they should re-date them, revise it, actually.
Other comments from the commission? The public hearing, public, would anyone like to speak?
Just a jury.
Looking for a motion?
You want to decide whether you want to close the hearing first or not.
I'm sorry?
You probably want to decide whether you want to close the hearing or not first.
Okay. Want to close the public hearing?
I'd like to close the public hearing.
So, moved.
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Gary, I guess you, Gary's took your place, so I guess for the purpose of this holding the vote, is that how it works usually, Hiram, from my information? Or do you switch back when a seated member, regular member comes back?
If somebody was seated and then someone else came in late, it's really up to you. It's chair, whether you think that the regular member heard enough of it to be clear about what it is or not.
We'll split it up. We'll let Gary hold on this one, and then we can call reestablishment.
Reestablishment.
Okay?
All right. Looking for a motion? In the application, anyone make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve the re-subdivision of the Edson Bigford property, application thirteen oh three, I mean thirteen dash oh seven. Map F thirteen, lot one oh three, lot one oh five dash three.
We have two lots. Second?
I'll second.
For motions?
Just a comment for the record, Mr. Chairman. You also have, I believe, a copy of a memo from Rip Switzki dated December twelfth, two thousand and thirteen. So, just to be clear for the record too, one of the, he talks about utilities, and he talks about stormwater management, and at this point, there's no development to deal with those issues. But he does specifically say that, depending upon overall ultimate development of the property, the applicant may need to revisit the traffic issue at some point in time, depending upon what's proposed and how that compares with the permit that was previously issued. So, just want to be clear for the record that that was one of the things that Rich said in his memo, and at the time of development, we'll look carefully at that and bring that to your attention as well.
It really has no relevance to the redesign or the realigning of the lot lines.
It doesn't. I just want to make sure that people know, because commissions often have asked about, well, what's going to be the impact on traffic? So, rather than just make sure that that's on the record, I just want to make sure that.
But we have a second bite at this when it comes through as a, an application.
Yes.
Now, should, this memorandum didn't come in my email packet, and I just, you know, I'm glad you called attention to it. Is that something that should be written to the record, or we just reference to it as enough?
Reference to it, I believe at this point in time is enough. It, December twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, talks about utilities, traffic, stormwater management, and survey. Those items will all be covered when ultimate development comes up.
Okay, we have a motion, and seconded. All in favor? Can we have comments, please?
Discussion.
Discussion. I do have a concern that the application is for a subdivision, and the town engineer's references for a re-subdivision, I know we've talked about this. I'm still a little confused how the two lots were established to begin with, and, but I do understand the advantage of having it re-subdivided now. It's just, how come we can't, how come the town can't discern when the original subdivision was done, and prove that it's two lots?
Well, the applicant could probably give you a history of the lots, when they were created, but it does go back a significant amount of time. When these were originally done, back in the eighties, mid-eighties.
Eighties.
The way that they were done was sort of a conceptual development process. I don't think it was as clear as the way we do things today. So, even if we were to research those, I'm not sure what a conceptual approval of that means, frankly. And after talking with everybody involved, we thought the best way to do it was to be as strict as possible with this particular revision. Could we research it and find out? Maybe it isn't, maybe it is. The applicant had no problem doing it this way because they felt that it was going to clear up any potential problems in the future as well. So, we felt that was the clearest way to do it. The simplest way, maybe, but we wanted to offer the public the opportunity to notice it, so, so that's why we did it that way.
So, do the maps on file show that property line?
When we originally got the master plan approved, you know, we showed big blocks of land, and it was from assembled parcels, so they were existing parcel lands, and we went through, and there's, there's big parcels, and we typically didn't subdivide them because as you develop the property, you look and go, okay, this, this property line needs to be here because, okay, we're gonna do this type of program on this thing. So, as we would do the programs, then we would subdivide the lots out. That's typically how we did it. So, we generally wouldn't subdivide anything out of the big parcels until we were actually doing a project.
Was it considered phasing? They had four or five different phases to the project or to the property when it was originally subdivided?
Well, it wasn't, when we assembled all of the parcels, we had, there was like three hundred acres, and it got somewhat subdivided when we put in the town roads. So, you'd have a big hundred acre parcel, you put a town road through it, so it subdivides the north and the south, but you still have subdivided parcels that had been subdivided by a town road. So, it becomes a little unclear where the lot lines are, and we would move those again anyway as we came in with a development program. You would come in and go, here's our program, and here's the physical boundary. So, typically, we would come in with the site plan application and the subdivision at the same time. Here, we're just, we're moving up the subdivision by a couple of months, just to clear things up.
For the record, when you read the correspondence, Rich Switzki's, two of his three memorandums call it subdivision, and one calls it re-subdivision. The applicant calls it subdivision, and the firm actually calls it subdivision. So, I think we're probably dealing with semantics here, and it's just, you know, I mean, maybe we should be clearer in the future, but I think we're all talking about the same thing, and, you know, I mean, two of the, Rich's reference to subdivision was one day, and then two days later, it was re-subdivision. And I think it's just a matter of the way it hit the case.
Well, the thing is, that's important is that we treat it, this commission treats it, and the legal notice treats it the most, the most critical way.
Stringently.
Most stringently, correct. And that's, that's the important thing. Frankly, if the applicant came in and applied for a re-subdivision, and we never had a hearing, or we didn't notice it as a re-subdivision, then we got a significant problem.
I think we're safe by public hearing and by the way we're.
Any other comments? The vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. Get them built by the end of this year. We need taxes.
As I understand it, item three being up with the, that has been postponed as a threat work.
That's correct. Continued until the next meeting. That matter, they have some significant, if you remember, perhaps from reading Rich's memo on this one, he had a number of different comments that he wanted to make sure were addressed. They're still working with the Farmington Valley Health District to get a lot of those septic issues and road alignment issues and grading issues worked out. I got a note from them this afternoon indicating that they were not going to be ready for this evening. They were hoping that they would have all that information squared away, which, by the way, I still think is too late to give it to you, to review, and so on. So, I suggested to them, either late, I think late last week, you know, that they really should pull it then. They didn't until this afternoon, and so that's why I couldn't give any further notice. But, yeah, it will be scheduled for your next meeting at this point in time, on the twenty-eighth.
So, we'll discuss it then?
No discussion.
We're correct.
Discussion items.
First item is the Wheaton Village District. I just got the final draft from the consultant two days ago, and I'm in the process now of putting that in a form that will make sense to you. I'll get that out to you within a couple of days. We'll take a look at it. It still needs a lot of work, frankly. I think what happened in this case is the consultant underestimated the amount of time that was going to be needed for what we were looking for, what we asked for. I can tell you that the consultant did a significant amount of additional work in terms of hours and work product, but I don't think it's ready for adoption yet, I certainly don't. So, I will tell you that I want to get it in better shape before you see it, and before it goes out to the general public. Hopefully, within a few days, I'll get that done before you can get it to you. Again, as you know, that's the section of ten, basically between Powder Forest
Again, as you know, that's the section of ten, basically between Powder Forest Drive and the bridge, one eighty-five. And that's the area that we're looking at. So I'll get that out to you as soon as I can. The idea initially there was to do a kind of a foreign base code similar to what we have in the town center. The reason that it's so difficult is that there really are no cross streets in there. Route ten really sort of bisects it in. We've got to sort of figure this to it out. So when you start to put a code together, trying to figure out whether the streets that are, cross streets should be, what the, what the dimensions should be, what the width should be, how they should intersect. We have a lot of different plans out there as part of this draft regulation that they've given us. Some of them really aren't realistic. One of them cuts right through a significant floodplain area that's probably not ever going to happen. So there's no point in bringing that to you, it just doesn't make any sense. I just don't suggest that at all. Certainly happy to show it to you if you like, but I don't think it's ever going to get built. So we'll, we'll put that together and the staff will get that together in the next few days and get that to you and get it out to everybody. That's really kind of it for the Wheaton one at this point. Any other questions?
Regardless though, that wouldn't have any impact on what we just saw, because it's, it's just a little north of there.
It is, yeah, just, and it was no proposal to change Powder Forest Drive itself. There was a proposal as part of this to make sure that that, that sort of front doorstep, that green space there at the corner, north corner, Powder Forest Drive and Route ten stays green and that's, that's green anyway, it's part of their plan, so there's no change there. The next one that I had was the marketing study. Again, I've mentioned it before, the phase one of the marketing study was done, it's online. I believe if you had had a chance to read it, it indicates a number of the directions that we ought to head in to sort of increase some of the sizes of existing businesses and attract new ones to town. The first phase of the study was the relatively inexpensive portion of the study. Second phase was scheduled originally to, to cost about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I think we all realized that there was no way that, that the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen was going to fund that second phase, certainly not out of, totally out of local money. We had hoped to get a grant for that second phase, we haven't been able to get that yet. So what we did was, the, I talked to the Economic Development Commission earlier this, last week, Thursday, last Thursday. And I talked to them about splitting that in half certainly. And they cut it back even further because they said that they think that there's some other things that they are looking into doing at the same time. They have some different goals, they were talking about possible development, development, I got to be careful how you interpret that word, but the use of the Baker property and creating a trail around that area for walking, jogging and so on. So there's a, part of that money would go for that. They, they consider that an economic development activity. I, I want to get all the land use commissions involved in that whole process. And one of the things that I've suggested to the Economic Development Commission is that they have a meeting of stakeholders that would involve this commission, would involve zoning, it would involve wetlands, it would involve the Open Space Committee, the Land Trust, certainly Board of Selectmen, all the land use committees. Because it needs to be a general discussion about how that property is used. I think if one board has a particular view of how it ought to be used and goes off in that direction without consulting the other land use commissions, we're just headed for a bridge that's out. Because no one's going to agree with something that just one particular group does. I think if nothing we've learned in the last seven or eight years, that's the way we need to do things here is to be completely transparent and have everybody involved in the process. So I'm working hard to do that. And that, that recommendation will be part of the, the budget documents that are ongoing now. Budgets need to be prepared and submitted to the Board of Selectmen by the end, end of January. So you'll, you'll see that reflected in, in your budgets as well. So that's sort of a, a little bit of an offshoot from the marketing study, but that's basically what happened with regard to the, the marketing study that we have right now. If people have other questions about that or if you take a look at the one that's been done and have other questions, please let us know. So we're happy to move forward with that in whatever way you think is appropriate. We are certainly trying to increase the grant list, there's no question about that, in an appropriate way. And we want to make sure that the study that's done indicates that types of businesses that we attract here and the sizes of the business fit into the fabric of the community without being significantly out of character to the town. So that's important. And as you all know, it's really no secret that one of the things that we need to do is to figure out how exactly we're going to replace the, the tax bill that the Hartford pays to the town. We've actually been working really hard in the last couple of years, believe it or not, to do that. And knew, I mean, anybody who was paying attention to anything knew a couple of years ago that it was likely that the Hartford was probably going to relocate at some point. We are working really hard to replace that. And if you take a look at the new development that's been approved and what's being built on West Street, Dorsey Cross and some of the other places in town, we think we can come pretty close to replacing that tax loss in the next couple of years. So we're hopeful that things proceed along according to those, those plans, we think we can. It still leaves a big question about what happens with the Hartford property. And there's a lot of activity going on with that. As you know, many of you may have come to the, to the charrette down at the Hartford back in September. That, that presentation is also online to take a look at. Last night, the Hartford Land Use Study Committee met here in this room here and talked about going forward, what are we going to do? There will be a meeting at the Hartford, a breakfast meeting that's sponsored by the Realtor that is, has been hired, retained by the Hartford CBRE, is going to have a breakfast meeting down there at eight o'clock on February twenty-sixth. I think I sent everybody a copy of that. If you do want to go, I just want to underline the fact, you need to register because you won't get by security if your name is not on the list. So please register if you want to go. It's free, if you want to either see the building or hear about what's going on, please feel free to come to that.
Yeah, just go to the chamber, look inside, take a quick time to register. But then because of security, you might not get in if you haven't pre-registered.
One of the other things that happened at this meeting last night was kind of interesting as well is that the Department of Economic and Community Development came in and they explained how, one of the things that they can do to help us out, they have a permit ombudsman. So if you run into a large permitting problem, either the DEP, DEEP now, or DOT, or the Department of Health, DECD can actually come out, give you a person, assign a person to help you through that permit process. And the person that came from DECD last night gave us some examples of how they had shortened the permit process significantly for certain things. It's interesting that they can really cut the time down if they really focus on it. So we've asked them to be close to us in this process and to help us through this process. Wherever we, we come across a potential buyer, the Realtor comes across a potential buyer, we, they want to know how long it's going to take to get through the process. We hope to be able to tell them that. We hope to be able to shorten that up by streamlining that permit process for them through working with the state in DECD. So we're hopeful that that, that helps significantly. That was kind of an interesting discussion. One of the things that we're also doing is using this, this property as a, as a model to create what's called a certified sites program. Many states, Massachusetts, New York, a lot of other states have certified sites programs. So if you as a developer are looking in Alabama or Missouri, wherever it happens to be, you say, I want a list of certified sites where I can go in, I know these permits are either already in hand or they're going to be able to be obtained quickly, that list is there. We don't have that in Connecticut. And so we would like to suggest to the state, and we did suggest to the state, that we create such a program using the Hartford property as a template for that program. So that's what we're in the process of doing. Committee voted last night to allow us to go ahead and do that. DECD's on board with it. So we're hopeful that that'll, that'll work out. We think it's going to be a kind of a cool thing, so.
We have a call up in this legislative session?
We, we don't need to. We, we actually can create that without legislation. We can do it ourselves. And if we create a program and it gets, people like it, gets good press. The, the state actually talked about doing it a couple of years ago, but for some reason they didn't do it. There wasn't the will to do it and, and it was unclear to me. I followed her presentation last night really carefully until she came to the point where she was trying to explain why they didn't do it. And then all of a sudden it was something, there was like a, a link missing out of the chain. I didn't understand what happened. Maybe it's about political, I'm not sure what happened. I honestly don't know what happened. So we'll figure it out. But if we can do it here and make it work for the sites we have in town, and that may be the first, maybe we do that for a couple of other sites in town too. Maybe it turns out we do it somewhere else as well. So we'll, we'll work through that. But it's kind of an interesting process. So, so stay tuned in that, for that one. We'll keep everybody notified as to the, the next meeting. Gateway Planning, who did the study on the Hartford, will be back here to talk about the code that they've created for it. They created a draft code, which I've got two extra copies here tonight if anybody's interested in reading. Taking it home, I can make other copies available, I can put it online for you as well. I wanted the Hartford to have it before it got widely disseminated and they've had it now for a week or so. So their consultant is looking at it and trying to make a determination as to whether they think it's acceptable, whether it's going to allow them to do what they want to do, or does it attract buyers based upon the way it's written now? The Hartford is very happy with the way this has gone so far. The real estate consultant is extremely happy as well because we work closely with them to try to make sure that they know what's going on, that we're trying to help them wherever we can. But we also want to be pretty clear that we're not looking to put any fourteen story buildings on a site like that or anything like that. So we want something that will fit into the character of the town. Based upon what we came out of the charrette with, some, some pretty good ideas that could go there. No question it will be a significant amount of development, no question. But they have constraints too. The fact that, that Route ten is a two lane road. They have obviously so much capacity in the sewer line, so much capacity in Route ten as well. So there'll be certain limitations on the property as well from questions. So that's where the, the draft code is. We think that it's likely that Gateway Planning will be back here in February, right around the middle of February, to explain to all the commissions that if this one included EDC, planning, zoning, wetlands, Board of Selectmen, everybody, just what the, what the draft code looks like at that, at that point. We expect probably one or two more iterations of the draft code by then and by then we'll have it in pretty good shape. Zoning Commission hasn't really seen and studied it yet either, so they'll be looking at it shortly to determine what's, what's going on there as well. So we're, so far we're happy with that. The Realtor, CBRE, John McCormick from CBRE last night gave a, a pretty good rundown of the types of things that he's been doing and the types of businesses that he's been talking to. And while he was obviously, couldn't say a lot about who they were or so on, he's encouraged by the response that he's been getting so far. They've been at it for five months and actually for a site that size and for the size of this particular matter, he thinks that's a lot of activity so far has been generated by the types of things that we've done, the types of things that they've done. So we're enthusiastic, so we're hopeful. We hope on the twenty-sixth that he'll actually have something to announce. One other thing too that was discussed last night is that on February twenty-first, and I'm not sure which day of the week that is, but on February twenty-first at nine AM, the Hartford will be giving an update to the town. I guess it'll be a public update, probably right here in this room, but probably to the Board of Selectmen. But they will be coming in, talking about where they are in the process, things that they have gone well and maybe they'll come and announce someone's purchased the property, I'm not sure. But there'll be at least an update at that time. And that was made known last night to the committee, so that's something that George rest in. Probably won't be long, so feel free to either stop in or tune in.
Well, physically the same as the one five days later, or?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I don't know what they're going to say on the twenty-first, so, you know, that could, that could put a real, you know, a change of pace on the whole thing. I honestly don't know.
So, Hirom, the Hartford has, has contracted with CBRE for, for the sale of the property.
Correct.
And then they have a consultant that's doing what?
Reviewing the code that we created, the zoning code that we created. A consultant is actually a specialist that deals specifically with these types of codes. They're out of Boston, the Cecil Group. And they've done some work in the area, they've done some work in Avon, they've done some other work in the area. So their job is to take a look at this code, to see whether there's anything in it that's either particularly onerous or particularly great, they'll let the Hartford know that.
That would minimal, or limit the, limit the development possibilities?
Exactly. Because what we want to make sure is, obviously, that this is really, a lot of the Hartford's money has gone into doing this work. Some of the town's money as well, I mean, thirty thousand dollars is not a small amount, but in the total scheme of things, thirty thousand dollars compared to what the total tax bill for that property is for one year alone is fairly small, it would change. So they have hired a consultant who specializes in these codes and a special attorney as well, who specializes in land use, looking at the code, made sure that we're headed in the right direction. As of last night at seven o'clock, everybody was still smiling, everybody was still happy, they're very happy with the direction that it's going in, so.
There was a comment made at the Board of Selectmen meeting about a couple of possible.
Yeah, there was.
I guess purchasers or tenants of some sort.
Somebody looking at a notion of taking a hundred thousand square feet, I don't know if that's supposed to get out.
Well, I mean, the meeting was public as far as I know, they, they, that's why I said they were encouraging about the number of people that have looked at it. Interesting too that they said a number of nonprofits have looked at it as well. Now that could be anything from, you know, nonprofit business, it could be a, it could be a college, I don't know. The way, you know, initially you would think, well, that's, that's really not a good thing, but there are ways we could deal with that as well. For example, sometimes some of the nonprofits, when they.
Pilots.
When they get a, well, yeah, what, exactly. And the other, the other way to do it even, even a little bit more tricky is that they could take a certain amount of money, put it into a trust fund, generates X amount of dollars which goes to the towns and fags. So there are a number of different ways it could, could be dealt with. They're not to that point here where they've made any of those decisions. Don't know whether they'll talk about that on the twenty-first or the twenty-sixth, like I honestly don't know.
So the twenty-first is a Friday. So that'd be the twenty-fourth would be the meeting?
No, twenty-first, it is the twenty-first.
So it's a Friday, there's a Board of Selectmen meeting?
No, well, I don't know if it's going to be, maybe it'll be a special meeting in the Board of Selectmen, I don't know. I'll, I'll make sure everybody gets the notice. They just decided this last night and I'm quite certain that was a date.
I think she said special meeting.
Yeah, could, could well be. And I don't know how many they're going to have, but I know that they want to, for, for whatever reason, the Hartford said, we'll come in and talk to you, we'll bring you up to date on what's going on, so.
So still the ideal would be reuse of the current building even if it's divided up, plus whatever we do north of there.
And the way we are writing the code is that they could do that really easily, no problem.
And, and some of the thinking was you could get three functions at that, at least.
Yeah, depending upon the way it's divided up into A, B and C. Initially, a lot of people were thinking that was not possible to divide the building that way. We've had a number of people, including the Realtors, look at it and say, it really could be divided that way. You could divide it horizontally, you could divide it.
Can you talk about the data center, how that could be reused by someone else?
Yeah, somebody could come in and say, we need an off-site data center. Actually, there was somebody during the charrette process that came up to me and said, you know, would they be interested in leasing us the data center for an off-site server farm? And I said, I don't know. I put them in touch with the Realtor and they're talking right now. So whether that happens or whether it's big enough to make that work or not, I don't know. But there's a tremendous need for off-site server space for, for a lot of these large corporations.
And the servers are in there, is that?
Well, I think, I don't think that, they may have been removed, I think, years ago, but still, the facility is there. The floors and ceilings are appropriately constructed so that could be put back in.
Your condition allows.
The infrastructure is difficult to come by and expensive to build, so it's already pretty made, it's easy to just move the machines in.
Bring your own computers, bring your own rack.
There's fiber down there too. There's fiber right at that building.
One of the interesting things too that came out of the charrette process, very interesting to me, was that there's probably enough power, three times the amount of power that they would ever need in that building. So it's really, pretty incredible facility. And so it's obviously well-built and will stand up for a long time. We think that there's a tremendous amount of potential, not only on that site, but obviously on the north forty acres as well. So a lot of things could happen there, we just want to make sure it heads in the right direction. So that's why we've, we started with the code. We feel pretty good about it and like I said, if we can turn this thing around before the building disappears, I'd be willing to, I think.
We'll all be famous.
Well.
If you pull that.
I don't care. At this point, I just want it to work, you know. I think everybody wants it, wants it, wants it to be great and I would certainly settle for the townspeople being happy with what happens there.
Well, you'll be undercover as some.
Yeah, yeah.
Planning today.
Planning today, yeah, there actually is, you know, there actually is.
Stormwater magazine, who knows?
They have a fold out there, you know, there's probably a dartboard on it or something. The last thing is the budget for this coming year. I don't really expect a tremendous amount of, of money to come out of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance for this year, but I would like to know whether it's tonight or the next day or two, if there are specific things that you want to see accomplished. We did get the subdivision regulations done, I thought that was a great help. We did move some of the other things forward with some of these other studies and tried to keep you involved in those as well. But there are other things that you think we should be looking at, whether there are other studies or we need to think about, believe it or not. Two thousand and seven, we finished the plan of conservation development after about a four-year slog. So every ten years we've got to do that and I've got to put that back in the capital plan or the capital non-recurring plan at least two years in advance. So if it's not this year, it'll probably be next year when we start to think about that again. And that'll probably be about a twenty thousand dollar price tag. So what I was going to suggest to the, the Board of Selectmen is that we need to sort of figure out how we can do that. Maybe we can do half one year and half the next, we can sort of split that up into two fiscal years, maybe a little less painful. But frankly, one of the things that, hey, just because we have a few minutes tonight, one of the things that we can do is not. of the things that we can do is not create such a large document as we did last time, tremendous amount of graphics and all that. A lot of that stuff's been done, it's fine. The way that it's, the communities are dealing with this today is they're splitting that task into two parts. One is a kind of a strategic plan, which is a much smaller document, more simply written, certainly some graphics and things, but it's a lot slimmed down from a lot of the stuff that we had back in two thousand and seven. The second part of it would be an implementation plan, that's specifically a small booklet that says, okay, here's exactly what we need to do, here's how we're going to do it, here's who's going to be involved. So that's one of the ways we can split that process into two parts. We can do the strategic plan, one fiscal year, and then go right into the implementation plan the next year. So just give some thought to that. If that, you think that's good, or you think it's terrible, whatever, just let me know. So as I start to put the budget together next week, just give me an idea of what you think about that, and any other things that you think should go in our budget for the next time around here.
I was at a meeting recently and someone said it should be six pages.
You can save.
So we all think, so take your current copies, if you don't have one, start marking the hoppets, see how we can save. Get to the heart of the matter.
Six pages may be really funny.
Yeah, because that was, it was, last time it was something else.
I think that, my sense is that we won't have that kind of problem again for a lot of reasons. I think that we've been open about everything, the issues are all on the table, everyone knows what they are. We can debate them and we can vote, and so be it, that'll be the way. But I think there was a lot of ranker last night, we just don't need to get into it.
We did that too, we had the big T hanging over us, the big target, and that made it a lot longer. Any, anything on Big One?
Last night the Board of Selectmen talked about that. Anybody see that, or was it there?
Yeah, we were.
Because I had left before that, so I apologize, but go ahead and let you.
They're close to it, I guess what they said. The town waved the eminent domain flag, and all of a sudden they started cooperating a little more, is what I got on.
Yeah, exactly.
So it makes sense that that's not a process.
It doesn't screw me, it doesn't screw them.
Well, it's town property, it's kind of interesting, you know. It's town property to begin with, and, but when somebody, the town for example, says, we'd like to get this resolved, and here's how we could do it, one of two ways, you know, the hard way or the easy way, maybe the parties will get together really soon. We're hopeful of that, certainly. It is going to be a process, no question, because once they get that straightened out, they've got to get their plans together and then come in and do site clearing, demolition, and so on, so unless it happens really, really soon, I still think we're looking probably at the beginning of the following year for an opening. So it's taken a while.
We're looking for a February start of last year. There's no chance of a February start of this year?
Well, you know, I don't know the status of their specific plans, Mark. I think that they've got to come in and we'll move it through the process as quickly as possible. We would issue the building permit tomorrow if they came in. They just need to be comfortable that the document has been signed, that there are no more legal impediments to them going forward. I think that's what their attorneys need to feel comfortable with, and that's kind of where that is. As far as we're concerned, they brought the plans in, we would review those and issue the permit very quickly, no problem for Mark.
How about floors, did we cover that really?
Yeah, I think so. Do you have any other questions on that, what you'll see? I think that they told us, I believe, as much as they know, I talked today, for example, with the property owner that's, or the developer that's buying the assisted living parcel piece, and they're really not ready with their plans yet. So I know that to be the case, they were absolutely correct this evening. Whether it's a month or two or three, I'm not sure. But it'll be interesting. I think those things typically, of course, tend to generate less traffic than what was originally proposed there in terms of office buildings, so I don't think the traffic is going to be an issue. I think we need a little design and site coverage and typically things like that, but... And speaking of design too, just so you know, just to keep everybody informed, the Design Review Board has actually met two times now, a new Design Review Board. There are two members that were on it before, but all the rest of them are new. Two architects and some construction people that have a lot of experience, and discussions so far have been very good, have been fair.
The meetings are shorter.
They are, they are, but they, maybe they'll, after a while they'll blink, I'm not sure, but they tend to cut right to the chase, and I think there's some good interaction that's going on between the Design Review Board and the Zoning Commission as well. Zoning Commission, for example, attended the last Design Review Board meeting to see the presentation for the property at the former Webster Bank Building in Cornwall, Drake Hill and Hop Meadow. And so that was a schematic plan, and we don't know for sure whether that's going to go forward, but that was primarily residential in nature, so we'll see what happens with that in the future as well.
Under Communication Administrative Business, Hiram gave me a note from CROGS, and in the next week I'll be asking municipalities to update their appointments to the Regional Planing Commission. I guess some of us over the years have gone to the X and Y, have an interest in being our liaison to CROGS, or do we rotate, or do we have somebody carry it for a while and then switch off? What are your feelings?
I think the chairman should do it.
Kevin, you were late. One thing, Hiram, I think it would be helpful to all of us if, without having to involve you do the work, could they send each, could they get the emails from every commission member and just send us minutes of the meetings? I mean, would you be interested at least getting it that way, so you can read what's going on?
What, at the CROGS meetings?
Yeah. Is that of interest? I mean, you can always delete it, but if you're interested in what's going on in the region, it'd be a painless way to get us, so.
Okay, I can make sure that that happens. I think you have the dates.
If you don't want it, you can tell your computer, but it's junky, I'm always interested in, you know, because... Would anyone besides me like to serve during these meetings?
What did we do last time, Mark? Didn't you go once?
Yes, I've been our representative for the last few years, up and on. And I think what we did was suggest that, that if we divided it up and took two meetings at a time, and have two members of the board hit the meeting so that it'd be an overlap. In other words, you would understand what went on in the meeting before, so that you could be appropriately informed the next meeting, so that you could actually participate in a vote and, you know, act intelligently as far as what the conversation was all about. And then your first, the second member would have that the same way as he went to the next meeting himself. So in other words, you hit two meetings in a row, but not the same two people.
There are only five meetings. The January 16th meeting was canceled, and there's...
It's usually every other month.
Yeah, there are only five meetings through the whole year.
They're Thursday evenings starting at seven o'clock. They usually would get over within an hour and a half or so. You're out of there by eight-thirty. West Hartford Town Hall, fourth floor. It can be dry sometimes, but sometimes it can be very informative, especially when they have guest speakers. But they've been going through the regional plan of development and just trying to wordsmith through their document, and so it's been dry for a while. But I haven't been present in the last two or three meetings, I can't remember, the last time I think I went was in October. So I'm not sure where they stand on their agenda now.
You know, I mean, I'm happy to cover it to start off, unless someone else is...
I like the idea, so, Mark, what you're suggesting is that...
To begin with, one member would go the first time.
Then the second, then two people would go.
And then it would alternate it through, so you'd only hit two meetings at any, throughout the course of the year. Even if that, I mean, we have, how many meetings do they have planned there? Five?
Five.
And so there's enough of us to do, you know, to work through that.
Yeah, so I'll volunteer for the March 20th and May 15th.
Okay, I'll take February 20th and March 20th.
Right, so you'll lap. And then they have, what, July, and then they take August break?
No, it's September, no, May is, they don't meet, May is the last meeting until September.
Well, then I don't think there's a necessity for two to go at that last meeting, because with that much time in between, there's not going to be a big overlap. I'd take the September one.
You will?
I'll take the September one.
And does someone want November?
September would be the November one, so I would suggest that you come with me on the November one, so I'd go September and November. You join me on November, so that you'll take the November one, and then the following one in two months, probably the January one, and then talk about it again coming in the year.
So what's the November date? To review, on February 20th and March 20th, it goes March 20th and May 15th, Mark is September 18th, and Bob, in March, the third...
Yep.
Okay.
It's the third, it's usually a third, middle of the month, the third Thursday, I believe.
Yeah.
So what date is it on November?
Yeah, February is the 20th.
The 20th, okay.
And if someone, if you can't go, I'd ask you, send me an email, if someone, something comes up, you're going to California or Hawaii or something, call me and I'll cover it. Send me an email.
I can step in if you need as well.
Right. Yeah, I think it's, I think we should be represented in, you know... Hiram, do you have any other communication or anything else?
No, that's it. All right.
Approval of the minutes?
Let's go through the approval of the December 10th regular meetings minutes. On the first page, any additions or additions?
I think that, I just had made a note, but I think when Mike Payne is a liaison to Board of Selectmen, and when he's here, instead of other departments, it should say he's here, I just think it's good policy.
Yep. Anything on the first page? There are nothing, how about the second page? Let's go to the third. There are none, let's try the fourth.
Just on the fourth page, somewhere in there with the Dorset Crossing, 151, 152, 153, it should just be noted that it's not 168 units, it's really 252 units plus 48 MS units.
Oh, combining the two.
Should be a total of about 300 units.
252, what was the other thing?
Forty-eight MS units, for a total of 300 units.
Okay. So the 168 was wrong, Kevin?
The 168 is wrong, but it's correct. That goes back to the, goes back to the approval from Dorset Crossing, even on their webpage, they have 300 units listed.
Of which 48 were the special?
Special.
Possible. 300 minus 48 is what, 252?
252. And just to go ahead, and just on a side point, I know Hiram had mentioned that Dorset Crossing was going to help offset the Hartford, the loss of the Hartford. From what I recall, Dorset Crossing was going to be a slight positive to the town, not a large increase. Was that anybody's recollection?
Recollection?
Yeah, that's what I remember as well.
You mean the offset of revenue?
The offset of revenue, correct.
Anything else on page four? Page five, none there to be seen. Now your motion to approve? Go down to minutes? All in, any discussion? For the minutes, no?
Approval of?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed?
Always been a normal question, Hiram. This meeting, you know, Hiram remembered meeting this morning where they talked about the, you know, Iron Horse to the River, and how Glastonbury's got a bowling house and just all this stuff. How soon do you think this kind of meeting might happen? Do you have to, can it be, can the boards be gathered together before there's a budget and just at least talk in generalities or pull over stuff, or does that have to be thrown around?
My opinion, last night the Board of Selectmen asked, I think Nancy Hossi, to come back with a list of people to sit on that committee to talk about this within 30 days. That's the type of...
They're also going to look for members that large, people who apply, you know, sets more than the usual two for this commission, two for that commission.
So it'll be that group?
As long as they're instructed, I have no problem.
It'll be that group plus the land use commission, so it's sitting around.
They're all going to be open, and they're all going to be made known to everybody, frankly, as far as I'm concerned. So if people want to come to the meeting and contribute, they'll probably, every single meeting will have public audience, so we'll try to encourage as much participation as possible. I think that what happens sometimes is that the group becomes so unwieldy that you're never able to accomplish anything. So at some point, there needs to be members that actually sit down and they go, whether it's 10 to two, or five to whatever it happens to be. So we need to somehow figure that out. But I'll be glad to let you know exactly what's going on with that as soon as possible. We wrote a grant, you know, for this trail thing to DEP, recreational trail grant, a year ago, and we had it all specked out with regard to how much it would cost, and how much it would, you know, how long it would take to construct, and so on. And we didn't get that grant either, for whatever reason. I guess they figured that we had gotten enough or something recently, but we will continue to try. So I think that a lot of it will depend upon how quickly we can come up with the money to fund that work.
Are they saying there's a net economic benefit they can point to for that?
Well, people say that, I think that...
They said that about a lacrosse field once, too.
Well, you see, that's one of the things that, and without getting into detailed discussion this evening on that, there needs to be a discussion about what's going to happen there. Number one, before you can determine how much it costs to do. And second, how much it's going to cost to maintain. People can say it's going to be a net economic benefit, and that may be true, but I think we need to sit down and do the analysis to show, you know, the actual calculations, you know, at least certainly projected calculations to make that true.
You could charge for parking.
Well, that's, you know, there are a lot of different things that could happen there. There are people that think that parking there would be great, there are other people there that think that a car should never sit on the property, so we need to have that discussion, that's really important.
And trying to do things on the river is extraordinarily different. Because of the environmental concerns.
Yeah, I mean, there's throwing down there, which is really important, and as my understanding is that that's no longer being done down there.
Yeah, they're going to some, like, the rolling club doesn't meet in surgery anymore.
The high school?
Because they've been, I guess they kicked out of the bowling house. No, not the high school, the rolling.
But we need to sort of rethink that, and whether that needs to be rejuvenated or not, or done away with, I'm not sure, but we need to talk about that whole process, so.
I mean, we're not going to build a $12 million bowling house like Glastonbury did, but we could do something. I mean, I think that is, if it's done right, that's another economic draw, people coming in, doing the outdoor thing, and then spending money in shops and restaurants, so if it's done right, but I don't think, I mean, again, personal opinion, I don't think it's going